Person with a felony? So I'll read this and I I'll yield the floor as Turk says. So I turned in this report Saturday to Joel Van because Wyman was refusing to take any reports. He sent me to Lincoln County. Lincoln County said they couldn't take my report. They sent me to the highway patrol. Highway patrol says, no, 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 no. He's got to take the reports. Start at your city level, then it goes to county. Then it goes to attorney general, and then from there it goes to the governor, then it goes to highway patrol. I have a voicemail with him telling me to take my reports to Lincoln County. He was refusing to take any reports. So I went ahead and I wrote, this report is my arrest, my arrest, my encounter, my perception. And I turned it in Saturday to Joel Van, and ever since then, I have had Britton driving by my house, sitting at the top of my street, but guess what? He sent those black men to my house that night, and I ain't scared of Britton anymore. I have contacted the attorney general, I have contacted the FBI, I have left enough of a paper trail that if something happens to me, you're all done. On August first, twenty twenty-two, I was stopped by Sergeant Brian Britton all day until the time of my arrest that day at or around three thirty P M. It started early that morning is when my two-year-old daughter and I were driving back home from Highland Road in the city hall park around nine thirty. Britton had drove at excessive speeds to fly up behind me and tail my rear bumper as I was approaching the stop sign at the corner of Highland and Sanders Way. He was practically touching my rear bumper with the front of his patrol car's bumper so much as when I looked into my rearview mirror, I could see nothing but the hood of his vehicle and him driving. Throughout the day and morning prior to this incident, I had already caught him driving by my home repeatedly so much that my stepfather, who was at my home this day, made the comments about him driving by repeatedly. As he also noticed, because we were all outside putting up my daughter's pool and my parents had come from Illinois to help me. At three thirty P M, I left my residence in my two thousand nineteen Jeep Cherokee to go to my friend's home. And as I was traveling east on Highland Road about the intersection after Sanders Way, I glanced in the rearview mirror. I saw Britton's police car and Chief Wyman's patrol truck fly around the corner and bypassing the stop sign at Sanders Way and Highland Road directly behind me. And Sergeant Britton directly behind me? And Sergeant Britton hid his life for me to pull over. I made no traffic violations or broke any laws, and I was scared for my life as I knew this was retaliation for taking my vehicle back from Britton's girlfriend, City Manager Rochelle Eaton. I pulled over to the side of the road on Highland Road. I was only one block away from my home. Britton then approached my driver's side window, irrational and threatening with his hand drawn and his weapon, and Chief Wyman sat in his truck, which was parked behind Britton's patrol car, which was parked behind me. Britton stated that they had received a call that an unidentified tall blond female driving a Jeep Wrangler, wearing a pink bikini tuck, had just left a bar on Old Monroe. I stated to Britton, I am not driving a Jeep Wrangler, nor am I wearing a pink bikini tuck. Why are you profiling and pulling me over? Never at any time were these two officers anywhere but behind me. I didn't fit the description of the vehicle that we're looking for, nor anything else. I pleaded and requested backup from the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department multiple times, and Britton refused. Wyman never got out of his truck. I was terrified because I know what he did to other people in other cities, and he was going to do it to me too. He then threatened me with the use of his weapons, and I was reluctantly brought out of my car where he used great force to throw me up against the car and handcuff me, severely injuring my right wrist. He then threw me into the back of his squad car again, twisting my wrist and causing abrasions and bruising bruises to my legs, arms, and wrists. Proud of that? You watched it. He left me instead of patrol vehicles, and that's when him and Wyman illegally searched my car. This day of August first, twenty twenty-two, the heat index was one fifteen, and the back of his squad car had no air and no circulation, period. There were eight-inch plexi glass windows surrounding me, blocking me from any air at all. The temperature in the backseat was a hundred and sixty degrees, and I know this because I did all of the research as if you left a baby in the back of the car. I was left back there for over fifteen minutes screaming for help, literally banging my head on the windows. You heard me. I couldn't breathe. I was suffocating. They refused to acknowledge me at all. They left me back there almost unconscious. When he came finally back to the patrol car to transport me, I was begging for my life for air. I was starting to pass out, covered in sweat. I couldn't breathe. I was sure I was going to die, or he refused to roll down my window. As we got onto Highway forty-seven in front of the businesses headed toward Troy, he cracked my window. I pressed my face against the window for air, trying to breathe. I I started screaming for help to all the residents. The manager at the Dollar Tree was outside of the store, and she heard me. She wrote on a statement. He then got out a cell phone and was videotaping me in safe time with the city manager Rochelle Eaton, watching me in the backseat of the car as a screenshot. She was doing this. She was in the upper right-hand corner. I was humiliated, terrified, and afraid for my life, and I still am. When we got to Lincoln County Sheriff's Department, he pulled out my ponytail holder, pulling my hair out and ignoring and denying me medical treatment for the injuries he caused my wrist and my suffocation and near death. I'm a nurse. I've never been so scared in my life, and I don't scare easily. He refused to tell me what he arrested me for. As soon as he left, Britton and I was in the custody of Lincoln County Sheriff's Department. They shackled me to a bench. I had cellulitis in my feet, ankles, and legs at the time, but no one cared. They never mugshot it, fingerprinted me, or anything. Britton never read me my memorandums, all right? I was released to a trustee's girlfriend. The Jefferson Jefferson City Coast is involved. I have PTSD because of this incident and see a trauma counselor again after being released from his care in May. So I finally made it through the death of my fiance and was released in May, and now I'm back. I have damage to my right wrist and see an orthopedic surgeon. I am traumatized. I have fell palsy and a stroke due to the stress and continued harassment and see a neurologist and multiple E R visits. He harassed and stalked and sends others to do the same to me. I have nine terrors, anxiety, depression, and I live in fear. He lied on the plea court and so did Wyman. Wyman is just as guilty and so is Rochelle. Britton also entered into the system alerts on me as suicide, medication required, drug user, alcoholic. I'm done. You guys are gonna get a huge civil lawsuit. All right, I yield the floor. Any comments on that?
All right.
I sent a notice to preserve evidence to the city a couple of weeks ago. Has that been acted upon?
It was received by the city.
And then that notice was distributed to all the employees. Thank you.
Moving forward with Ms. Candy Rhodes, actually. Candy, you have four.
Um, I'm just here because I live in town and I have a lot of cats around where I live. I don't own a cat. I don't have a cat. Um, there's a seagull next to me, and cats stay there. Um, they stay over in the trailer park, because I'm kind of between the two. Um, I've counted ten to twelve cats in my yard, even have taken pictures of some of them to make sure I'm not seeing the same ones. Um, but they are multiplying and multiplying and multiplying. It's become a problem in town. I know somebody was up here a while back talking about it to you guys, too. Now, um, I have found that there is something that we can do about it, but apparently it violates some ordinance that we have in town. So I would like to amend the ordinance that we have in town, and I don't know specifically which one it is. I was just told when I was talking about it uh here one day in city hall. Um, I would like to amend it. Um, they said that the ordinance is if you trap the cat and you take it to get it fixed, it costs twenty dollars, which I'm willing to put a thing up at my restaurant or wherever to start collecting money, you know, from people if they'd like to donate. But um, it costs twenty dollars to pick them, they get them fixed, and then they bring them right back to where they got them. But it violates the ordinance because once, I guess, you leave town, and when you come back, the cat needs to be uh tagged and uh needs to be registered, I guess, with the city. I guess, something along those lines. So I was told that you cannot bring the cat back after the cat is taken out. So I would like for something maybe to be done where if they capture the cat, they take it in, they get it fixed, and and allow them to bring it back because they are fixing the problem because they're fixing the animal. And if you do nothing, then you're gonna continuously have this problem.
So I came. I'm a volunteer tracker for Cheryl Perrell. And we catch the cats, they're fixed, fully vaccinated. They're in the back where they came from, and they are marked. The typical left ear is cut off. And if you drive through Winfield, there are quite a few cats running around with the typical left ear cut off. And that is a sign it has been trapped, it's been fixed, it's been vaccinated, and it's in the release back where it came from.
So it's in better shape when they bring it back than it was when it was left?
The people that's got the cats that feed them, that don't get them fixed.
That's the problem. The people need time back.
Well, there is a lady that's the cat lady.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna have a thing down there. Um, we haven't made it. Okay, but we have to get it passed first because if we do that, then it's illegal for us to bring cats back. And to be honest, most people, they like dogs, and there's places to take dogs, too, but there's not always a place to take a cat to. And so a lot of people, the reason why some of these cats are here is because they're bringing them out here and they're abandoning them. So I'm just trying to fix a problem that we all have, we all share, and it'd be better if we all cooperate and work together.
Well, there's a lady that needs to be talked to in town with her fifty cats.
Well, then maybe she needs her fifty cats captured and taken and gotten, say.
We'll get fifty more. I mean, they're ridden like, uh, I don't know what, you know. And they're just walking.
If I remember right, they they made unless they did away with it, they had a lease law on cats where they couldn't couldn't roam. Oh, dogs, everybody knows pretty much, but cats, they had one on cats. If you have a change, then it's still in there. And we don't.
I thought it was the law, too, that you could only have like two or three.
What, cats? I don't know the number on cats. Dogs is two, but you can find you can find more than two in a lot of residences around here, which is ignored. But that's for real. There is a lease law. And there's the cats are ridiculous. I'm not too far from what she's talking about. My God. They should just have open seats in there and it wouldn't be an issue.
I'll put a sign in her yard and you'll know. Matter of fact, if you drive down Elm Street where the police office is, make a right and then go kitty kitty and or just park at the old Carter Ricks and you'll see the hole.
But I must admit there are more than just that person's feet.
I'll tell you what, they go all the way to Winfield Properties and back. It's up Elm Street. It's as big as the crackheads walking up and down all night.
That's all night long, too. No, they won't know where you're from.
The uh the easiest way to address that would be just having a little lecture provision that says that, you know, basically having a program in place to address feral cats that allows for that process of our lives.
It's Cheryl Perrell, German.
Pick them up.
Well, I also believe that in order for her to pick up any animal that you actually have to have from the property owner, you place the trash out. So I just wanted you to know that as well.
They didn't want to do it.
No, no, they they won't.
I went that route, they wouldn't do it.
The county won't do it. Have, and we knew when you had them coming in that I know of, you take all their stuff and cat out.
They'll only pick up a dog. Yeah.
Yeah. Nothing good on that either.
There's a lot of kids, right? You know, a lot of kids.
Oh, I saw those.
That is something that I appreciate. Okay. Um, so um, okay, so now we are gonna get into public comment. We have free public comment. Uh, Denise Marshall. She just has question marks.
I don't I don't have an ordinance on me. I just have.
Go ahead, honey. You have the floor.
I didn't know, even though we even know that I have come to you this day. Um, I I learned, I realized since then that it's not being investigated, okay? I'm not teaching everybody here. I have to. And and I think a lot of you have figured out by now that there's been a lot of problems that some of you are not aware of and and it overpassed a whole year. Our lives have been nightmares because of rumors, whatever. People not controlling their emotions. When we come to the board, here I go to, you know, Mayor Ruckle. Mayor Ruckle sends me this place. That person sends me another place, so it's like it's just, how to pass the buck now, okay? So first, I want you officers to know, I have no issues with the police department. This is not to me. I'm not out to get you guys or to get people fired or whatever, but I do have an issue with bad cops, okay? Now, Robin, you were you've just said that you were you have been accused, falsely accused of something. I have just been falsely accused, okay? Because the reason, I did not go there to support Angie. You you were on, you were at the court that day. You said that you went to support your friend, just like we did. No, I had a reason to go there because I was falsely accused of um participating or being sent to harass Rochelle. And that was not the case at all. And and you know what? Many times, things have I I've endured a lot of crap because nobody gets their story straight up here. Everybody wants to dance up with each other, but nobody wants to come in a dress of meat and find out these facts, okay? And I'm gonna tell you something, okay? I I I witnessed something with Ms. Die and Rochelle that she knew and asked me to come and give my give a statement to to whoever was coming near her house. I felt that was appropriate because I was a witness. I had I had a paper to prove exactly why I was there at that school dropping off my daughter, okay? I'm trying to try not to get into the personal stuff of it, but you know, there was a restraining order against TARP. But I don't know if you know this, but I you had passed. When when I dropped my daughter off, you passed me, okay? So I waited to pull out my car. I come up behind you. You were sitting at the stop sign for several seconds, probably forty-five seconds. I didn't say anything because I figured you don't lie. I was just up there, maybe texting or whatever, so I waited. Well, um, I seen the car go by. Um, I seen you quickly pull out over it and follow it close. Kind of like, kind of like a cop would follow somebody that was speeding or whatever. And I I, you know, well, when I found out it was Ms. Die, I it 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 made me curious. Why, if if you file a restraining order against somebody, that would mean you're fearful of them. So why would you follow them out, okay? Well, she asked me to because, okay, first, I did not come to your house because she asked me and Mr. Carson to harass you. That was not the reason. I never met Ms. Die until that July meeting. And I wanted, and I knew she had a valid reason to be upset. And all of us have have been trying to get together to support one another against this stuff because it's time that this crap stops. You know, and and I understand that you've dawned, have no clue what has been going on over those last couple of years. It it's I I've just had a problem with my yard, and I I could come up with a thing that's thick of the crap I've been put up with, okay? And and I can send it to you, and we can discuss it, whatever. Anyway, I'm sorry, I didn't I didn't really have time to really make good notes. But Mr. She just called me and asked me to come because she thought somebody told something to her that she thought you were moving out records. And 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 we have, we all have good we all have good reasons to believe records are hidden, destroyed up in 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 this thing. I know, you know, I mean, anyway, that's all she asked me to do. I was talking to Ms. Mr. Carson that day, and I didn't understand what he had to say. I'm like, I don't, you know, and I told him, I don't know. She I said, she just called and asked me to go by there. I don't know what's going on. Somebody hurt, somebody, whatever. That is the only reason I I went ahead. I said, I don't know where Rochelle is. And Mr. Carson said, I do, you know, come on, let's go. So he grabs his key, goes out the door. And he got into his truck, so I just followed him out in in my car, you know, because I was gonna follow to see what was going on. Mr. Carson got out of the truck and approached your house be on his own. I would have just drove by and and saw that, you know, hey, nothing's going on, so. But I did not come there to harass you. She did not ask me to come there to harass you. And so I want my name cleared, and because I understood that day, I was named in the lawsuit as as coming to harass you. Please don't don't laugh about it because I am very upset about this, okay? It's not a laughing matter. Now, that went so I went there because if if I was called, if I was called as a witness, I wanted to make clear that I I was that that's my concern. I was not there to go against you or I I'm trying to be a a voice, a a reason in this all this shit. And every time I get crucified for, you know, it's like a political game, and that's not what I'm interested in. Anyway, she called Lincoln County, apparently, to take her her thing because I guess Britton was the only one on it. And I understand if if she's upset with this guy, who wants him coming? I would not want that man come to my house if he had hurt me. So, yeah, of course, call, you know, call somebody neutral or something. I don't know if that's the law or whatever. And so, uh, Ms. I I Brenda, um, Angie and I were over Angie's house.
Joanna.
When?
Excuse me? Joanna.
Oh, okay, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I don't pretend to be there. But anyway, when Officer Britton came, she was telling him, I don't want you to come here and this and that and everything else. Well, he said, well, I've gotta take, you know. So he comes in and he he starts to listen to what he get. You know, I guess he wasn't really interested in my statements anyway because, you know, it's, everybody says, you know, this related police matter, blah, 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 blah. But um, a- anyway, when I started to talk, he kind of kept interrupting me and this and that and really didn't let me finish my statement. Before, and and then the other Lincoln County officer come in, and basically he just kind of, you know, just walked off and escorted, you know, kind of shoved a Lincoln County officer out, and they went out and talked, and it's like, well, what the hell? So he brought by some complaint forms. So I guess, you know, I don't know, so I guess that's what I had to do, so I.
No, um, actually, life has brought up complaint forms. Britton or Wyman never brought it to you.
Oh, whoever it was, somebody brought complaint forms. So I filled out the complaint form, and I took them to you, correct? Um, okay, and while we were talking, um, we, when you discussed, kind of, you thought what had happened with Love Lakes was one of your officers. So I sent you an email correcting that. I didn't know if you received it or not. But I I have been trying to explain this situation because it it I was um, accused of things several years ago that I was unaware of to where a- apparently one of my neighbors fought my brother and his kids were the hazmat team because he's a painter, his sons are painters. They were in their in their full body thing, their respirators. So the neighbor started this little gossip bullshit, and I I know that's what kind of led up to some things where um, I had called nine-one-one on on my teenage son at the time. And uh, when when the officers arrived, my son and I were talking, and I didn't know the officers were behind me. And what I saw was a red bucket dust in the middle of my son's forehead. And remember, you told me to forget what, just let go of what Love Lakes did. I can't, it wasn't Love Lakes at that time, but he was the one who went into my property without a search warrant over a messy yard situation after I told him five times. It had nothing to do with my case. And I didn't feel comfortable with them going in there, and I know you meant something different by it. But please, please, never ask somebody to let something go. I have no, I'm talking about Rochelle. That day we were talking, do you remember?
I do.
Yes. I I, like I said, I know you were probably talking about something else, but I can't, I I wish I could, but I am it's all the years later, it upsets me because I could have very well lost my child that day. Okay? I I had an uncle who was shot, preaching for a cigar and a shirt. I I know how easy mistakes can happen. He I know my son had a cordless phone in the scene that night. It was dark. And I know the way he is when he gets mad. He's like his mother, and he lay all the phones around when he's talking. You you understand how easily that could have went very fucking well, okay? Y'all, y'all laugh and giggle about us, but we we have issues and and have been caused by this bullshit. We live down there. We keep to ourselves. And and for years and years, you know, I you you remember, you know who I'm talking about on the P N C? On the PNC, who flat out told me to take my ten-year-old daughter and walk away from my house for the good of the city. Do you remember, you remember one of the, I'll.
I didn't know that that comment was made to you.
It was. There was a lot of comments made to me that, you know, there was a lot of shit said to me. That's why I quit going to them. He's the same very person who kept, remember the man who kept saying burning down? About, talking about buildings down on Main Street? When they, you and me, all were talking about fixing up these buildings. Oh, just burn it down. Well, that's the very man who started harassing me on Facebook and making little comments to me. And so, yeah, y'all don't know what we have been dealing with. You know, just because you are not, have not been bothering us doesn't mean that past members have not been harassing us and past police have not been harassing us for years. It, you know, and it's gotta stop. We're trying to impress on you how much hell we've all been through over the years. And y'all think that we're just trash down there, and, but it's like, we don't bother nobody. We have never bothered anybody, yet we seem to be targeted. And, I don't know, you know, I just send y'all, I gotta stack that deck, you know? I'm getting tickets over things when what was going on in the, what, whatever. The city property looked a lot worse than mine. And then put us all through the hell, and then you're gonna, you're gonna put, you're gonna allow a a trash hauling company in the middle of our halls? After putting us through the hell to clean up our property? That made no fucking sense.
Wait a minute. We weren't allowing it. That was a public.
No, you guys were considering it.
We have to have a public hearing for that, and we just said there was a public set.
But do you recall that the public, we had fourteen people vote against it, and you were all just gonna ignore that vote? The, don't, don't, no, ma'am, I have, I have, I have proof. I can go. I saved my minutes and things, okay? But yes, I know you asked my opinion, but I'm saying Mayor Ruckel, if he was gonna have to break the tie, he was gonna support it, and he was one of the biggest ones. So why would you, and I asked him flat out, would you want to cross the street from your house? Well, no. It's like, why are you voting for it then? Or why are you gonna support it? When, you know, why ask our opinion if it doesn't matter?
Are we talking about the champagne business?
Yeah.
Ruckel wasn't on the board.